The broadcast of the regular meeting of the Minneapolis City Council will now begin.
Good morning. My name is Lisa Bender. I'm the president of the Minneapolis City Council. I'm going to call this regular meeting of the city council for April 17th to order. I'll note this meeting has remote participation from members of the city council and city staff as authorized under Minnesota Statute Section 13D.021 due to the declared local public health emergency. I'll just note that I have joined by phone for now as I attempt to get in with my computer and hope to join with the video soon. And at this time, I will ask the clerk to call the roll so that we can verify a quorum for this meeting.
Councilmember Connaught. Councilmember Reich.
Here.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Here.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Here.
Councilmember Schrader.
Here.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Present.
Councilmember Ellison.
Present.
Councilmember Goodman.
Present.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Present.
Councilmember Gordon.
Here.
Council President Bender.
Here.
There are 11 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. Calling the agenda for today's meeting is before us. Are there any amendments to the agenda from councilmembers? Seeing none. I'll ask the clerk to call the roll on the acceptance of the agenda.
Councilmember Connaught. Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries and the agenda is adopted. Next, we have the acceptance of minutes from our regular meeting on April 10th. May I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So moved, Madam President.
Second.
That has been moved and seconded. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Connaught. Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Council President Bender.
Hi.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries and those minutes are accepted. I have managed to get myself into the meeting online, so I'm going to switch now and hope that works. I'll leave the phone on for now. There we go. Is that working for everyone?
It's working.
Great. Next, we have referrals, petitions, communications, and reports to the proper committees. May I have that motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Connaught. Councilmember Reich.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
President Bender.
Hi.
There are 11 ayes.
That carries and those matters are referred. With that, we will proceed to the order of new business and invite the mayor to provide his weekly report on the state of our local public health emergency. Welcome, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. Knowing I'm about to sound like a broken record, I want to start out just by saying thank you to all of you. It's been an honor to work with you through this emergency. I know we've been working through some very challenging times together, and I'm just so grateful for your partnership and all the work that you and our entire city enterprise and our staff are doing. It's an honor to be part of this team. With that, I'll get right into the meat of the report. There haven't been any additions to emergency regulations since we last met. The governor did extend his peacetime emergency through May 13th. And as a reminder, the city's emergency declaration is coterminous with that of the state. So I believe it's nine or 10 emergency regulations to date. None have been in the last week. The, as for the health report, MDH has reported that social distancing may be having an impact as they are seeing COVID cases are doubling every eight days. And that's a good thing because what was expected in many estimates was for them to go up dramatically more. So they're, so in other words, they're doubling now every eight days instead of the expected doubling of cases every one or two days. MDH continues to use strict testing criteria to focus on the highest priority patients, healthcare workers, and those in congregate living situations such as long-term care and correctional facilities. As to their health report by the numbers, the total approximate number of completed tests thus far has been 41,675, which is up nearly 10,000 tests from last week. There is 1,912 cases thus far in Minnesota. I want to note that Minneapolis accounts for about 10% of that total. Patients who are no longer in need to be isolated, there's 1,020, and that's nearly double from last week. There have been 94 deaths, and there have been 705 cases in Hennepin County. 475 cases have required hospitalization, and there are presently 213 that are hospitalized as of today. And then 103 people are hospitalized in an ICU unit as of today, which is nearly double last week. Again, although the numbers are going up in every single category, the predictions and the projections were in many cases shown to be worse, which is a good sign that social distancing is in fact working. The total number of positive cases in Minneapolis is 192. Total hospitalized is 62. Total recovered from COVID-19 is 92, and then the total deceased in our city is 17. We have launched in Minneapolis a public-facing dashboard just yesterday with specific data that includes daily case counts. We want to be as transparent as possible, and although these numbers may be difficult to hear, we want to be honest with the public as to where things are. And I do believe that that transparency can also assist in helping us move forward in terms of better calculating projections. So this will help round out the statewide numbers we've already been able to view on the MDH website. As for donations hub update, as I shared out last week, the Health Department is brokering donations of needed items and connecting these resources with community partners. Success story from that work. MPA, a public housing authority, needed homemade masks for their property and maintenance staff and were not able to find masks given the shortage. The donations unit connected them with the United Health Group, who are making 15,000 masks in the coming weeks and will be delivering to MPA and other organizations in need. New topic, a request for application. An RFA for the release of $100,000 of COVID-19 Community Response Fund is now live on the Health Department's website. Community agencies may apply for up to $15,000 each for response activities focused on underserved, cultural, and vulnerable communities. And proposals are due Friday, April 24th. As for our physical distancing efforts, and I know there's been a lot of talk as to social distancing versus physical distancing, perhaps physical distancing is a more accurate way of describing what we're actually trying to do as we don't want to keep people isolated mentally and in terms of relationships. The Health Department continues to work with communications on better signage to support stay-at-home compliance in crowded convenience stores, parking lots, and other community gathering spots. Physical distancing resources will be provided to corner store owners that will include signage and resources to convey that customers need to stay six feet apart. Environmental health connected with 20-plus food shelves to distribute COVID-19 and food safety advice. Flyers have been put in 50-plus bus stops and three bus lines with information about physical distancing. We want you to get this information no matter where you are or how you're traveling. And they've reached 22 churches in Minneapolis to request help with physical distancing messaging and to assess community needs. And that work and that outreach, by the way, is of course not limited to any one religious institution. Finally, we're exploring the idea of issuing an emergency regulation to use face masks in certain circumstances. The city workforce, and Council President, I can pause anytime, so feel free to interrupt me. The city's workforce continues to maintain essential functions of government. Our daily rate of workers on duty remains between 89% and 91% of the total workforce. Approximately 78% of workers on duty are working remotely, excluding police and fire. And finally, the Office of Emergency Management's efforts remain focused on the situational awareness trends, impacts, and offering guidance and support across this enterprise. As for procurement, the total spend as of April 15th was $1,092,364. Expenses increased by a total of $120,000 recently in this last week. Contracts for mental health wellness services from the City Coordinator's Office, BTAP, DID for homeless initiatives through Public Works, as well as cloth mask procurement makes up a chunk of that addition. Now moving on to Public Works.
Mr. Mayor, we do have one question from Council Vice President.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam President and Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious if we go back to your initial public health update. Is there demographics for Minneapolis in terms of race and gender? Do you, do you have any?
We do have demographic data. I believe the Health Department may have better access to that right now. I'm not sure if Gretchen is presently on the line. And if not, I'll just ask my staff to text me those numbers so that I could get them to the council by the end of this presentation. Commissioner?
They could include geographic information as well.
I do think that the mayor's office has been forwarding the daily updates to the council, but I don't, I do believe they include race and gender, but not geography.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner Musican, are you on and do you have those available?
I can run to the other room, but as the Council President indicated, we are sending those out on a weekly basis. We are waiting, we are not putting that information on the dashboard yet because of the size of the numbers. And when we break them down into categories, it gets close to violating people's confidentiality. So as our cases continue to rise, unfortunately, we don't want them to do that, but it will allow us to make more public the information about race and geography. But as the Council President said, that is being shared with you currently.
Thank you. So Public Works remains fully functional, making sure to comply with health guidelines for employees. And there are a few things I thought that would be worth highlighting that the Public Works team has accomplished during this crisis to support the enterprise, our residents, and our visitors. First is the pickup-only permits to accommodate businesses that have shifted to takeout, which is obviously a good chunk of our restaurants and cafes. We have issued permits for and installed over 50 pickup-only permits for local businesses. This reserves space in front of the businesses to make access to pickup and takeout easier. Next is expanding space for active recreation. You're all familiar now with the street closures that the city, in conjunction with the park board, has issued, some to complement what NPRB has already done, but also some expanding on that work. And we've had a very close partnership over the last several weeks. This is such an important measure that we're taking as a city to ensure that we exercise our bodies both physically and mentally, and we can continue to do so while maintaining proper physical distancing. There aren't full closures and access for all modes is maintained. And I won't read through all of the closures. I think you've, we've sent out information regarding what each one of those is, but it's, the numbers are growing. Next is pedestrian push buttons. We've transitioned many traffic signals to eliminate the need for pedestrians to push the button that you often see. It's that yellow or sometimes green button. The team will continue the work while their capacity allows for it. And signs have also started to be placed on the signal post informing people the signal will change automatically. This was something that I know many were considering even before the COVID-19 crisis, and especially in a time when you don't want to spread the virus any further through a touch. It makes sense to put it to automatic. After thorough research of other jurisdictions, the requirement to pay metered parking remains in effect. And that's because there is less parking demand, and the city has significantly reduced ticket enforcement efforts already at meters that are in high-demand areas. But meters, parking enforcement, the parking enforcement itself will continue as usual. For public safety, the first section I wanted to talk about, as was requested by the council last week, was the enforcement of the stay-at-home order. There have been citations that were issued around our state, but to date, in Minneapolis, MPD reports no citations or arrests have been made. The focus, as I mentioned earlier, is on education and outreach. Many of you have expressed concern with how the stay-at-home order might be affecting residents who are experiencing some form of domestic violence or at risk of experiencing domestic violence. Surprisingly or not surprisingly, the reports are down right now by 13% year-to-date and down 38% week-to-date. Now, we could speculate somewhat as to why some of these numbers are happening. It could be because a victim is at home with their abuser, and there might not be a safe window of opportunity to make a call. That is possible. And when a victim doesn't want to file a report, Minneapolis Police Department officers refer them to MPD Community Navigator, Cecilia Rood, as a resource. So the Community Navigator is beneficial because it's able to directly issue orders for protection. And they have experienced an increase in those requests since the stay-at-home order has been issued. So again, some of these items may be going through the Community Navigator as opposed to directly through MPD. This work has included direct outreach to ensure victims or survivors are connected to resources and have information on how to access those resources during the stay-at-home order. And we can share a list of those agencies that are involved and are partnering with councilmembers. This is really important work, and I'm just grateful to the work of our Community Navigator, the work that she's doing. MPD created an internal COVID-19 task force also to lead on development of protocols and procedures related to this pandemic. Communications and updates include very specific safety and cleaning protocols and guidelines and information from the CDC as well as MDH on the best practices. MDH also confirmed its first positive COVID case this week. And so measures are underway to minimize this risk of spread further. We've seen what the difficulty looks like in the New York Police Department, and we want to make sure that as many of our officers remain healthy and well as possible. And that goes for all of our first responders across the board, from inspectors to firefighters to police.
So, Mayor, we have one, oh, sorry. Go ahead and finish this section, and then we have one question.
Okay. Officers will now be expected to wear protective masks on all calls, and testing procedures will be implemented for possible and confirmed exposure. Self-assessments are also being conducted daily. Temperature checks using non-contact thermometers will be rolled out in the immediacy as well. I'll pause there.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for this information. I wanted to go back and speak to the domestic violence. I have a question, just wanted to update my colleagues on some work that is happening. I am working with the mayor's office as well as the Office of Violence Prevention for us to do a landscape analysis of all of the various domestic violence work that is happening and figuring out how can we coordinate between the various the various agencies and community organizations that are doing the work. And really, when we have shelter in place, it creates, as the mayor was saying, a very unique challenge in that it makes it particularly hard for victims and survivors and witnesses of domestic violence unable to be able to access resources. So having to think really creatively and innovatively about how do we do outreach in a way that meets people where they are and is able to help provide them with the various services that are still needed. I think that it's important that when we talk about domestic violence, that to differentiate and delineate that when we talk about domestic violence, we're talking about intimate partner violence, but we're also talking about child abuse. So I want to make sure that we're also naming that there are many children who are, who get reprieved from the violence in their homes towards them specifically by going to school and having after-school programming, for example. And so all of this together makes it very challenging for us to be able to identify folks who are in this, experiencing various forms of family violence. And so we're thinking, we're coming together, working very hard, thinking creatively. We're working with John Jay College and the National Network for Safe Communities to find out what other jurisdictions are doing so that we can hopefully bring that here to Minneapolis. And by creating the system now, we're also having a system that we will be able to replicate in the future if, forbid, we have to experience an emergency that requires shelter in place. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing this up. It's a really critical issue in our community. Domestic violence, both intimate partner and child abuse, it ripples across generations and spills out into our community. So it's our responsibility to figure out what our role is as the city to address this issue. So thank you, and I just wanted to give folks that update. Thanks.
Thank you. Council Vice President Jenkins.
Thank you, President Bender and Mayor Fry. My question is potentially for the police chief, but I'm curious, there was a report earlier this week about police departments and law enforcement departments doing a fit test for the mask. And I'm wondering, you noted, Mayor, that police will now be wearing masks almost all the time, or all the time, I assume. Are they being fitted for these masks? Do you know? Or maybe the chief is on the call.
Thank you, Council Vice President. This is actually an issue that we were just checking on yesterday. And I want to see the result. There was a concern about an improper fit testing resulting in a wasted mask. I'd like to call on the chief, if he's available, to further clarify. The information that we got was from Commander Gerlinger saying that if we do a full testing, it would include the fact that one way to fit test requires using up a mask. So it would be up to 1,000 wasted masks in that process of testing. But I'll check with the chief if he's there just to confirm.
Yeah, I believe that theory has been, I guess, debunked, that you can reuse those masks after fit testing?
Council Vice President, that may be. Do we have a member of the police department on that can further comment?
If you press star six to unmute.
Good morning, Council President. To Council Vice President's question. So as Mayor was indicating, we did contact and have been in contact with the organization who certifies fit testing for peace officers around the country. And in light of the pandemic, they have actually gone ahead and waived fit testing for law enforcement officers because they know that under the unusual and unprecedented circumstances, there's just no way to go through that fit testing procedure during this time. As the mayor was also noting in that study they did, there's actually more likelihood to contaminate more peace officers by the protocol they had set up. So for the time being, they have gone ahead and given a waiver, basically, to police departments across the country that because it would just take too much time under the circumstances. But many of our officers, because we do regular yearly training with gas masks and other things, we feel very comfortable and confident that they'll be able to utilize the current masks that they're being issued.
Thank you, Chief. My only concern is the safety of our employees, our first responders. I appreciate that update.
Council President to Council Vice President Jenkins, thank you so very much. And yes, we are doing all we can, as the mayor indicated, to make sure all of our first responders that their health and welfare is being looked at.
And Council President, Council Vice President, I also just got a note from my staff that we're also looking at alternative ways to undergo a fit test that would neither waste the mask nor waste time. And I'll note that, you know, in the last year and a half, I believe the police department changed policies with respect to facial hair. And I say this as someone who's sporting a pathetic excuse for a beard myself, but as many of our police officers have some form of facial hair, that might be something that we need to address because it inhibits the proper use of the mask itself.
And Council President to Council Vice President Jenkins to the mayor's remarks just there. Yes, I recently suspended temporarily the facial hair policy in light of just what the mayor was indicating so that they could make sure they're getting a proper seal with the current mask they're using.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you both. Those were the only councilmembers in queue for questions on that section. Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. The Fire Department updated its department-wide all-hazard pandemic plan and infection control policy in March. There was a very robust plan that they already had in place, and it allowed us to really fine-tune it to best respond to COVID-19. Updates include specific safety and cleaning protocols and guidelines during non-response, work-related activities as it relates to the stations, fire ground and training, food and mealtime prep, and shift changes. Like MPD, self-assessments are being conducted daily in each station, and non-contact thermometers have also been provided to each station as well. As of last week, wearing surgical masks is mandatory at all times in common areas. As of last week, wearing surgical masks is mandatory at all times in common areas of stations. And I'll note that some of these measures that are presently taken by our first responders in the form of regular thermometer checks as well as wearing some form of mask or facial covering in public areas is something that the rest of us will very likely need to move in the direction of in the near future as well. State and federal activity. As I mentioned earlier, Governor Walz extended the peacetime emergency declaration, executive order through May 13th. The original order signed on March 13th was set to expire this week and has been extended. With regard to the state legislature, on Tuesday of this week, the Minnesota Legislature passed their fourth COVID-specific response bill. The majority of the bill is focused on policy and technical modifications needed to address a range of issues. There was also a $1.25 million appropriation to Second Harvest Heartland to increase their purchasing power to service other area food shelves. In the area of rental assistance, Representative Houseman and Howard introduced HF4541, which proposes eviction and mortgage foreclosure protection and an emergency housing assistance appropriation of $100 million. And given the dearth of this kind of funding in previous state and federal bills, I've been urging, and I know many of you have been urging our delegation to support this bill. For elections, wanted to add this topic for this particular update. The bottom line is I believe our residents, city and state, need expanded vote-by-mail. More than one-third of Minneapolis election judges are 60 years of age and older, and 12% of our polling places are located in residential buildings, including senior housing and public housing. The Minnesota House Subcommittee on Elections discussed Secretary Simon's proposal for expanded voting options for November, but the House minority members are not in agreement with this proposal. At the federal level, Senator Klobuchar is leading the charge to increase access for vote-by-mail options for states in preparation for the November general election. And there continues to be some skepticism from Senate Majority Leadership. I very much hope that we get through that. In the area of federal resources, this week, the Treasury posted and opened the application for states and eligible local governments for the Coronavirus Relief Fund included in the Federal Cares Act. States and local governments with populations of 500,000 and over are eligible to apply for direct assistance. And as I mentioned earlier, the application deadline is Friday, April 17th at midnight. Much of our assistance can flow through the state. So, we're continuing to work with our partners to ensure that we can get that pro-rated formula. Finally, staff across the enterprise continue to work together on recommendations for the city's CDBG appropriation. And there is quite a bit of hope that we can get the CDBG formula used on a broader scale to essential cities, 50,000 and above throughout the country, which would obviously directly benefit Minneapolis. And calls have been placed to our federal delegation on that front. And they're all for it. Ideas and proposals continue to circulate at the federal level for a Phase IV COVID response bill. But there has been no indication from leadership that they're even close to being ready to discuss a draft at this point, and so I'll make sure to keep you updated. Local coordination and a homeless update. The ongoing closure of public and private buildings has reduced or eliminated access to restrooms for persons experiencing homelessness or unsheltered homelessness. So, what we've been doing is working with partners to expand access to hygiene service stations in targeted areas throughout the city. So, in addition to porta-potties and handwashing stations, Public Works will be installing and servicing garbage receptacles, and Health will be installing Sharp containers as well. And the following four locations have been identified as the highest need that we're moving forward with for hygiene, for bathroom, for receptacles. That's Bryant and Broadway Avenue North, All Nations Church, which is Bloomington Avenue and 23rd, HCMC, right around the Hope Church there, 707 10th Avenue South downtown, and then Lake Street LRT Station. The base cost for the four hygiene stations is budgeted at $8,716. Actually, that number is wrong. It's lower than that. I think it said $8,716 per month. I believe it is a little bit less than that. We can get you the accurate figures, but it's not an exorbitant cost, and it is something that is absolutely necessary. They will stay up for as long as the stay-at-home order is in effect, and we will assess the need once it is lifted. The gap funding package, I think you're very familiar with. The city is already working to receive donations from private individuals or entities for the Minneapolis Gap Fund. So, in addition to the funds set up publicly, we will also be able to receive private funds and have had several inquiries already in that realm. In the area of housing, we're announcing today the application process for housing assistance will be open from 9:00 AM on Wednesday, April 22nd through noon on Monday, April 27th. We know that between now and then, our partners will be doing a ton of outreach to community and that the applications we receive in that window will far outpace the resources we have. We know that before the application process even opens. And as you know, we have two programs that will be assessed through the application. The first is the Emergency Housing Assistance Program, which will provide rental assistance to Minneapolis households, all eligible Minneapolis households to help cover rent and utility payments. And then there's the temporary shifting of and opening of resources in Stable Homes, Stable Schools Housing Stability Fund to all MPS elementary schools. And I want to note especially that we're going to be prioritizing those at 30% of AMI. So, that's prioritizing at 30% of AMI for both the Emergency Housing Assistance Program as well as the Stable Homes, Stable Schools program. We worked with the Tenant Resource Center to build a broad coalition of partners with deep community connections to help implement these programs as well as we possibly can. And quick list of the partners. We got Catholic Charities, Community Dares, Latinas Unidas, and Servicio Clues, Minneapolis YMCA, North Point Health and Wellness, Minnesota Indians Women's Resource Center, New American Development Center, CAPI, and Stevens Human Services. So, for both of those programs, in most cases, families could receive up to $1,500, and with some large households, possibly qualifying for up to $2,000. Small business update. Last Friday, we launched the application process for the forgivable loans, and applications are being accepted through next Monday, April 20th. CPED and my staff have been working very hard to ensure that people need access to the funding notes available. And I so appreciate council members who have been getting out the word and working with our partner and community relationships, both in the areas of housing as well as business. Getting to the end here, cost containment.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Schrader has a question.
Thank you, Madam President. I don't know that it's a... Well, I guess it is finally a question. First of all, you know, Mayor, thank you and everybody that's been working so hard on this. I did want to kind of share some of the frustrations I've heard about getting out the modified 2% business loan. I'm sure all of us are hearing this, but the small businesses are really the backbone of our neighborhoods, and all of them are hurting. I'm hearing from businesses in my ward who really need that help right now. And I've been assured that the modified 2% loan program will be able to address those needs because a lot of the other loan programs the city is doing are really, really targeted. And that excludes a lot of areas of the city, including Ward 11. And without, you know, the modified 2%, without that program, there's really no city relief available to business here. And we're launching a lot of other programs, but not this one. CPED sent around a detailed list of city, state, and federal programs, but that list did not include the modified 2% loan program. If the city says we're going to have this relief available, we need to make it available. So, if we're, I really need to know kind of what that timeline is going to be for launching the modified 2% loan program and how people are going to be able to access it. I think the biggest thing is really, you know, when businesses are hurting right now, they deserve the clarity in these times of uncertainty. And they need to know that these programs can help them get through this time. And it's our responsibility to, you know, give them that guidance and support. So, I really hope in future updates, we can kind of hear when the modified 2% loan program will be available to other businesses in all parts of the city.
Council President, Councilmember Schrader, I agree with you. Is Director Frank on the line right now? Perhaps he can give us a timeline as to when the previously 2%, now 0% loan program will be up and running. I know that there was some work happening with our lending institutions, making sure that we have the right protocols in place to allow for a more extensive delivery. But if Director Frank could comment on that, that'd be great.
Mr. Mayor, Council President, and Councilmember Schrader, it's the same funding source, the same $2.2 million that's available for these two programs, the forgivable and no-interest loans for small businesses and the modified 2%. Let's call those 0%. And it's our intent, after we understand the extent of what we believe to be a huge demand, a huge need on the part of businesses around the city for those forgivable, no-interest loans for small businesses, to work with the mayor's office to understand how to allocate that same $2.2 million and then to make available as part of some future deployment, those 0% loans. It was not our intent to make those 0% loans available as part of the emergency response. So, that's on us. We probably gave that impression. But it's, that's the money that's available, and we'll work with the mayor as the applications come in by next Monday, this coming Monday, to understand how to allocate that single resource to the two pieces of the program.
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead, Mayor.
It was my intent to have that money available as part of this emergency process. And so, Councilmember Schrader, I can assure you I'll be working with Director Frank in the coming days to make sure that that is moving towards being up and running.
Well, I appreciate that. I think my concern is if it's all the same funding source, if the money runs out before it gets to all the businesses, I just want to make sure that there's some attention given on the front end to make sure that there is going to be something for businesses later on. And if that means, you know, not labeling it 0% loans or if they have to be different loans, I mean, I think just making sure we're open, very honest with businesses about what help we'll be able to offer and being able to really be thoughtful about how that money can be allocated.
I agree. Council President, Councilmember Schrader, the, what will have to work out is the percentage breakdown. And I'll be, I'll make sure to reach out to you on that.
Great. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Schrader. We have a couple of more councilmembers in queue on this issue. Councilmember Cunningham and then Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to just give some feedback around the small business supports. I'm very grateful for the really centering of equity in the way that we approach allocating resources and really helping to fill gaps. I think that that's incredibly critical, and I'm grateful for your leadership on that. One of the things, just to kind of share, to, you know, when we think about moving forward, so Ward 4 is interesting in that we have areas that are of very concentrated poverty, multiple areas, and then we have a few spaces that have histories where they were not redlined and racial covenants happened. There were a few neighborhoods that that was the case. And so, what that means is that a lot of the... We don't have a lot of commercial real estate developments in those areas that have been redlined, but there were, there was some commercial real estate development in those areas that were not. And so, what we have is a lot of folks who live in the areas that qualify and then own businesses and hire people from those areas but have to go into the non-redlined areas to be able to actually own and operate a business. And so, you know, I, it's maybe a question or a comment around, you know, how do we think about having resources follow the people rather than... Well, how do we have the resources follow the people? So, if folks live in, for example, the promise zone or a green zone or an ACP 50, but they have to operate a business in a different part of the community or the city because that is where real estate, commercial real estate is available, how do we address that gap? Because that is something that we're experiencing in Ward 4 with the limited amount of real estate available in areas that have historically been redlined. So, just wanted to, perhaps there's an answer there, but also just wanted to provide those thoughts on kind of how this is rolling out and impacting the community. So, thank you again for your leadership on this. Just wanted to share the lived experience. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
Yeah, thank you very much, and I appreciate the discussion. I think that maybe this should give us a little bit of a chance as we roll out the application on these forgivable microloans to look at what kind of response we get from those. It may well be that the 0% version of the 2% loans that deals with banks aren't really what the critical needs are. I'm hoping we can take a deep breath here and kind of look at the actual information we gather and engage with some of our businesses. I think Councilmember Cunningham's point about is where people live and where they own a business might be very different. They might actually qualify for other funding sources from the federal government, and they might be already getting lots of support from somebody. And they also, conversely, might not be. And maybe the only chance they have to get is something from the city. So, if we could take a little bit of time, since we obviously aren't ready to go forward with this 0% loan idea and look at what's actually out there, listen to some of our businesses, assess some of the needs, maybe we can come back and tailor something better. Maybe we'll even need to try to find some other resources. I'm assuming the demand for this emergency funding is going to be great, just like Mr. Frank was indicating. And so, we may find that it uses up all of these funds, and this goes on longer than expected and longer than any of us hope. So, we're going to have to try to cobble together some more resources too to support these businesses that our neighbors, our residents, and others depend on so much. And if and as we move into that, me and my office are ready and willing to help and roll up our sleeves and engage our businesses and get involved in trying to find a solution that'll work for everybody in the city.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I think one theme I'm hearing is that I think just a need for councilmembers to be able to communicate clearly the right information to our businesses and constituents that are contacting council offices, asking if they're eligible for support or what supports might be available if they aren't in the targeted geographies that have been highlighted, which of course is probably thousands of small businesses across the city. And I think it's worth mentioning that the federal government's programs, I think, are falling far short of the need in all of our communities, and it's going to be impossible for the city of Minneapolis or any local government to fill that gap. So, we continue to advocate, along with many partners, for an enhanced federal approach that gets funding to small business owners, to housing supports, because there is absolutely no way that the city of Minneapolis can shoulder the financial burden of the amount of aid that's needed.
So, Mayor or CPED, I don't know if there's any further clarification on that question about the specified geography versus a citywide approach and what resources will be available for this call today or if that's a follow-up question.
Thank you, Madam President. First, let me say I agree with you entirely. We have limited resources, and we wanted to make sure that those limited resources were targeted to those who needed them most. And I feel and felt strongly that abandoning our racial equity lens in a time of crisis would not be of service either to the platform that we've laid out as a city or the goals that we've set forth. And so, I agree entirely that there are still... And so I agree entirely that there are still businesses, both inside and outside the designated zones, that will not receive funding, at least from the city. But we're doing everything possible to target and to supplement the, the funding that will and come through the state and the federal governments. And to the extent we can, we, to Council Member Gordon's point, yes, we will absolutely use the data that we're seeing and where the demand is and how the program is functioning as a mechanism to perhaps shift the program to where it's needed most. And that, yes, that would be inclusive of the 0% program and so we are, we will look at that for sure. If there are no other questions, I'll move on to cost containment.
Thank you. I don't see any other questions from council members.
Thank you. There has been a hiring freeze that has been issued and with the announcement of that hiring freeze, we know that approximately $19 million of personnel expense associated with vacancies is now frozen. There's been a discretionary spend freeze. With the diligent work of the budget office, they have identified up to $10 million in savings and staff are working at putting together a review process to determine how much of that figure is wholly discretionary and what should remain available for critical expenditures. There's been a delay of large purchases as well. The delaying of large purchases was another strategy to curb our budget woes and IT is reviewing $8.9 million worth of large systems projects. Fleet is reviewing $15.4 million worth of vehicle replacements and both departments are working with finance to develop recommendations on what can be delayed till later this year or deferred entirely to next year or beyond without seriously compromising the city workflows or incurring additional costs. So we're finding every single pocket of change we can to ensure the long-term functionality of our city enterprise and providing the, the top possible degree of service. Finally, on the wage freeze, the, the total amount that can be saved through a wage freeze is, is $6 million. And, and that number actually obviously would go up over time. A wage freeze policy came through the executive committee on Tuesday, April 14th, and was referred to council on April 17th with, with the next stop at Pogo. Already, we are, have moved in that direction for non-represented employees, politically-appointed employees, employees from the very top of our enterprise pay scale. And we are in the course right now of talking with our union leaders and partners to nail that strategy down as well. I do feel strongly that we need to all be in this together. So I'll, I'll-
Mayor, one, one question or comment from Council Vice President Jenkins on this.
Thank you, Madam President. Mayor, I absolutely agree that we need to do these cost containment measures. I'm just curious if you know or if someone can answer the, the 14 million in fleet purchases, were those electric vehicles that we were planning to purchase?
Council, Council President, Council Vice President, I would expect that the answer is, is yes, at least to a certain extent of those vehicles, but I'll, I'll check in with Director Hutchison if she's on the line.
Good morning. I am on the line. Can you see me and hear me? Yes, okay. Thank you for the question, Council President Bender, Council Vice President Jenkins and Mayor Fry. A certain portion of those would have been, would be electric vehicles. Just a reminder on our electric vehicle purchase strategy that is available for sedans and light duty only. And our vehicle mix is sedans, light duty vehicle, as well as the larger equipment that we need to maintain, maintain the city. And we're looking at that whole mix as we look forward into possibilities for savings.
Thank you, Director Hutchison.
Council President, I, I'll conclude. I know that this is a shared sacrifice among the enterprise and I really appreciate everyone's willingness to entertain this conversation about cost containment and keep an eye and an open mind as we continue to look at cost savings as well in the future. There's more work to be done and I appreciate the support at all levels and we're going to get there. I'm happy to answer any further questions, Council President, but I'm finished with the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Member Kano had a question for the end of the presentation. Council Member Kano.
Okay. Hello, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you. I'm participating via phone, so been watching the chat and been listening to the mayor's report and seeing the, the slides that he's shared and I wanted to, to say a couple of things. So I'm going to end with a question for the mayor around timing, but first I wanted to share some input from a variety of Latino practitioners who have been working with me to try to figure out what the details of the, the housing assistance is going to be for, for the COVID-19 response. And so the mayor's office has been helpful in making themselves available for, you know, brief conversations with these community members and the mayor and I have had the opportunity to connect a couple of times over the last week on the, the specific fund for, for families who might not have any stimulus checks coming to them, who are not going to be eligible for any unemployment insurance help from the state, who will not have access to any other sort of government support system, whether it's Section 8 housing or housing voucher or, or other things like that. So a couple of the things that I wanted to share with you all and to make sure that are on the public record here is that the program that we end up structuring and rolling out at the city should really not have any barriers that require a type of social security number identification, whether it's an employer identification number or an ITIN, which is an individual taxpayer ID number. So enable to really be able to make sure that this money is available to communities who live in Minneapolis, who pay taxes to Minneapolis, who are very active in our local civic engagement fabric, you know, whether it's organizing forums or participating in community conversations about how do we respond to the raids and deportations. All of those people make up our city and they contribute to our city with taxes and, and they're, they're going to be folks that we need to consider for the long term here. And so one of the important messages that the Latino practitioners that get together with me every week, and there's probably 50 of them that participate in the phone calls every week, have been really clear with us in making sure that we remove those barriers of requiring a social security number or requiring some type of EIN number or an ITIN number to make sure that this is indeed a program that undocumented families can access. There are a lot of people that have already figured this out and I would hope that our city staff members are being proactive in tapping those resources and that we're not going at this alone because they're, you know, just across the river in St. Paul, I get a ton of messages talking about how great of a program people like Munir and Tao May have been able to put together under Mayor Carter's leadership when it comes to the Housing Assistance Fund and that they were able to leverage some kind of crisis response or crisis aid sort of clause in the state or local level that really helps them to create flexibility in the way that these funds are administered and allocated. And so I do think that there are already some really good models throughout the country and even across the river of ways that we can really put a program together that families can feel good about and that communities can feel good about. And so right now they do have a lot of questions around the specifics of the requirements that are, that might be involved in the program. And so I just wanted to make sure that folks on the dais or on the city council could hear about those because it's likely impacting people in your ward, whether it's northeast with the large Ecuadorian community. We know in parts of North, there are certainly Latino families that have been moving up there who are also undocumented and will need access to these funds. So the idea is to really be able to co-learn with places like St. Paul and California and San Francisco specifically, who have rolled out programs like this, removing things like the ITIN, EIN, or a social security number as a prerequisite or as a requisite to be able to qualify. There's also a question about whether or not this resource will be considered earned income for the applicant and concerns that it shouldn't qualify as earned income for the applicant, but instead that it should be categorized as some kind of disaster aid or crisis aid response. And so looking into the technicalities of that, again, I'm hearing a lot of great things about the, the city of St. Paul's city attorney, who was really creative and was able to find a way to make it work for them. And I would really encourage our staff and our folks under the leadership of Mayor Fry to dig deep and to really be creative about the ways that we're putting this program together. I know we don't have a lot of time. I know that today we're supposed to make a big announcement about it and, you know, the press, the media advisory has gone out. And so it, it, I would hope that we would take time to really look at those specifics before rolling out a program that may not have the intended consequences or intended outcomes because we're, you know, we're, we're just hoping to, to roll something out sooner than later. I, I hope that we can use the next two or three days to really zero in on some of those, some of those questions that have been relayed to both the Housing Policy Director at the mayor's office, Andrea Inouye, and certainly shared this information with Andrea Brennan and some of the other folks who have been at the table, such as NCR leadership. And then the last recommendation from community is to say that if our fiscal agent contract with Catholic charities is too prescriptive to the point where it bars undocumented families from accessing it, that we should move a portion of the funds into a more flexible fiscal agent partnership with organizations who have been serving undocumented people for decades to be able to let them to run with it and administer a portion of the funds for any, any racial ethnic group that falls under an undocumented status. We know that undocumented people are not just Latino people. We know that there are African-American, you know, folks that might, well, not African-American, African descent folks who have been coming to this country from, whether they're escaping war or other things that might fall into this category. We know that there are Asian-American folks who might fall into this category and we want to be able to make sure that those folks get access to those funds as well if they fall into this non-regularized immigration status. So thank you, Mayor Fry, for listening to those folks. I know that they, they are still looking forward to meeting with you and would love to make sure that they're conveying the realities of the challenges for people who don't have a proper immigration status in this country because the issues of fear really get in the way of how folks can access these funds. A lot of people aren't readily or eager to, to share more information about themselves and their lives right now, knowing about the draconian measures that the White House administration has issued on immigrant families across the country. And so really being able to, I guess, break out of the mold of the, the reporting requirements and the, you know, documents that we need to put together to make sure this program is, is running. In addition to doing that, we really do have to make sure that the moral heart of this initiative is, is really intact and that we're working hard to make sure that we're thinking outside the box to reach that, that threshold of making sure that this program is, is successful. And so outside of that, I wanted to make sure that everyone got to hear those points because up to now they've only been shared with the mayor's staff and with city staff who are working on developing this program. Outside of that, I do have two questions about the, the timing of the declaration of emergency and what happens when the moratorium on evictions get lifted. So I'm curious about Mayor Fry, what your best ideas or recommendations would be for us as leaders to tackle over the next, I would say 20 days, given that today is April 17th and as you mentioned earlier, the May 13th stay-at-home order will, will be lifted. And I'm not quite sure when Governor Walz plans to lift his declaration of emergency, but we know it's a, it's a, it's a clock that's ticking. And so I'm, I'm concerned that, that we as a body may not have a direct coordinated approach at where, what kinds of support systems we are trying to build for people when that declaration of emergency is lifted and when evictions are going to be actionable. I haven't heard of any bills right now that protect communities from evictions once the, the moratorium is lifted. I am hearing from residents that their landlords are already telling them as soon as this thing is over, like I am going to evict you if you do not give me all the money that you owe me. And so I hope that we're not going to wait until families start getting evicted in massive numbers to do something. I hope that we are thinking about that timeframe and that timeline and what happens when that, when that new measure can kick in again. And so I'm just curious if, Mayor, you have any advice for us as to where we should be focusing our energy in terms of preparing for that moment in time when an eviction moratorium is lifted and, and what that space is going to look like? Are, are you anticipating that there's going to be a law in place to protect people? Are you thinking that we're just going to have to kind of figure it out as it happens? Or what's kind of the forward thinking that, that you would advise us to be considering when we look at that timeframe, at, that these months-
Council President, Council Member Kano, yes, there's several questions there that I'd like to address. First, I'd like to address some of the housing-related issues and I want to start by thanking our staff, thanking my staff and my office, council staff, the staff throughout CPED, who are working around the clock to get programs like this set up. And I'm very proud of the program we've, we've set up, which yes, in fact, has gotten national attention specifically in working with and providing supports to our undocumented community in Minneapolis. Council Member Kano, you mentioned that there was a concern that applicants would have to provide either an employee identification number or an ITIN number. They do not. So I'll say it again, applicants do not have to provide either an EIN number or an ITIN number. So that, that issue should be erased right off the bat. Second, the reason housing was chosen is the research and data very clearly reflects that housing was the greatest need, especially for our low-income communities. And to provide that form of stability at this time of crisis, we felt was very important. Not to mention, as far as taxation status, that was one of the only ways that we could help ensure that the monies provided which go to the landlord did not register as direct income to the tenant. So it helped us to better ensure that the tenant would not have to register income and thus not receive the full bang for the buck that we were spending to help protect them. Third, we wanted to make sure that monies were going to a household as opposed to multiple individuals in a household and this was a much easier way to track it. It would be quite difficult at times to understand who was living with who and under, we, we wanted to provide a full support to an entire household as opposed to on an individual basis and much of the programs that we have set up at the city do in fact reflect that. Next, we wanted to make sure that the, that the monies set out and the supports that were provided were not subject to some form of public charge. And we've seen around both media, both locally and nationally, that a concern of public charge is, is a great concern to our undocumented community and we wanted to put that- charge is, is a great concern to our undocumented community, and we wanted to put that on the forefront. As to the plans following the moratorium, and I believe what you were talking about is a moratorium on evictions that came out of the, the state level. Yes, we are, we are working very hard right now to ensure a federal and, and state package that would allow for a supplementation of the Phase III program coming through the feds and additional rent supports at all levels. We know that although the, although the evictions are not in place, debt continues to be incurred in the form of rental payments. And we need to be working with both, with our tenants to ensure that they are not stuck with large bills that they can't pay due to loss of work following the termination of any form of eviction moratorium. And yes, we are in constant contact with both state and federal governments on that exact topic. You know, this is something we take very seriously. These, these, these conversations get detailed. But as to the main concern that I heard addressed, which was the concern regarding EIN numbers for applicants and tenants or ITIN numbers, they do not need to provide them. And I've also been in contact with our housing staff in the city, and they've also ensured that, to the extent that there's a non-traditional lease agreement that one of the applicants has or a, a relationship that is tenuous, we will work with them to make sure that nonetheless, regardless of what, of, of the, of the specifics, they are able to receive those funds. So, now, happy, those, I think that addresses the, the questions and provides clear answers to them, and thank you.
And then, I just have one quick follow-up. I, I appreciate that. Yeah, I, I appreciate that. I just, I just hope that we can work towards establishing a law that doesn't kick anybody out because I, I just don't know how much money is going to be coming from either the federal or the state government that will be able to replenish those lost wages that people are going to accumulate over, over months of, of a shutdown or a stay-at-home order or, or the time that it's going to take to kind of bounce back from the effects that we've been seeing. So, my last question is, for us, as we're looking forward to a stay-at-home order being removed or maybe phased out by May 13th, what are we thinking in terms of the timeframe for the types of actions we anticipate in, in about a month or so? Do we anticipate also allowing businesses to then reopen in, in about a month? Or by when do you think we might know some of this information? Because we're, we're down to less than a month between now and the time that the governor lifts his stay-at-home order. So, I'm just curious about what we can anticipate from your office about the future of these actions for our city specifically.
Council President, Councilmember Kano, to your first point regarding a concern of kicking people out, yeah, I'm also concerned and, and I, I'm also against kicking people out. To your second point, which is what exactly is planned in a month from now? Councilmember, the honest answer is, is we don't know. We can't quite predict where this virus will pop up, and we can't predict exactly how businesses will, how we will respond with a reopening. We are in the process of developing a plan, and we're working with other jurisdictions as well. And, and obviously, the, the state has a very significant role in the governor's office. And so, we're going to be working with them over the coming weeks and months around creating a coordinated plan for our city.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And I know that this, this topic of sort of looking at timelines and understanding how it will affect city business, like city enterprise business, council offices, our own structure, as well as the broader community, is a topic that we have for discussion on our upcoming policy group agenda. But as the mayor said, you know, we're relying on all of us, the best information that we have from the Department of Health at the state and our own advisors. But there is an enormous amount of uncertainty from that community right now in what the timelines will look like based on a lot of factors that are unpredictable and out of our own control. In my mind, I have been thinking that for the rest of this council term and mayoral term, we will likely be in some version of not-quite-normal. What that looks like, I think we are all learning and trying to understand, but our typical, as you all know, our typical normal activities include many large meetings with lots of people, over many, many large gatherings, over 100 people. And we don't know how long it's going to be until that kind of community engagement, for example, will be possible under recommendations from health advisors. So, I think we will all have to stay, you know, flexible, but also planful in figuring out how we can govern in this environment, how we can perform community engagement in a new way, and how we will support our community through what is likely to be years of economic hardship and downturn. And again, I think that's why it's so important that we keep raising this issue of the federal government's response is not adequate. Our state legislature has not passed any rental assistance dollars. You know, we need those other levels of government to step up because no local government can get through this alone. Our revenues are going to decline dramatically, and there's just no way that we can singularly support our community through this based on property taxes, which, of course, so many people are going to have trouble paying as well. So, that doesn't mean by any means that, that we don't continue to bear the burden of, of stepping up and supporting our own community through this, but financially speaking, we just have to be so clear that the federal government and our state government have to provide that base level of support that will bring our community through the years ahead. So, I appreciate so much our RG, our RG, IGR team and all of those who are working to advocate on behalf of our community there. And I think it's disappointing that our state legislature has not passed rental assistance, for example, in this time of crisis. Council Vice President is in queue to ask a question or make a comment.
Wow, thank you, Madam President. I'm pretty sure I forgot what the question was. That was a pretty long reminder, so I do apologize. I, I would just offer too that as much as we want to help everybody, we understand that everybody is struggling. We simply are not going to be able to, to provide the type of support that everybody is going to need. And to your point, we have to be advocating to our state legislators. They must come through to help the residents of the state of Minneap, State of Minnesota as, and specifically Minneapolis, as well as the federal government. And, and that's where I think we need to really begin to focus our energies. I, I agree with Councilmember Kano. We must be looking to the future and trying to figure out how we come out of this epidemic. But to the mayor's point, you know, things are still up in the air, and, and there is just no real end in sight. I mean, I've, I've heard the governor's emergency declaration being considered as a endpoint, but historically, at the, when those things end, it has been re-instituted and extended. And I, I don't see that changing in the near future.
Thank you, Council Vice President. I think that wraps up all of the questions and comments that we have in queue. Mayor, did you have anything else before we proceed to the next item?
No, I didn't. Thank you for the time, Council President. Thank you, Councilmembers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thanks to everyone for their questions and comments. The next item on our agenda, oh, pardon me. With no objection, I will direct the clerk to file the mayor's report. So, that brings us to our next item. This item is a motion from me to amend the prior council action related to our organizational meeting in order to designate Councilmember Fletcher as a member of the Audit Committee. In our restructured operation, the functions of the Ways and Means Committee have been transferred to the Finance Subcommittee and his capacity of Chair of that committee as former Vice Chair of the Ways and Means Committee. He will then serve as member of the Audit Committee, replacing former Councilmember Worsami, who has resigned. Is there a second to my motion?
Second.
That has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on that item? Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just wanted to welcome Councilmember Fletcher to our Audit Committee. We will appreciate his inquisitive mind and his curiosity about how we work to make our, our city a, a better functioning place and hold the public trust in everything we do. So, thank you for your willingness to serve on Audit Committee, Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you to Councilmember Palmasano, who's really transformed the Audit Committee in the last six years as its Chair, and I think really gotten that Committee to a really amazing place, including now, thinking about how that work will shift and change based on the local public health emergency and the likely ongoing impacts of it in our city. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, Council President Bender. I just wanted to thank Chair Palmasano for your words and thank everybody for your support in this. I'm excited about the work the Audit Committee's been doing. I think they actually have generated some really important information that's informing a lot of our policy as we think about how to run our city more effectively and efficiently, and I'm excited to be part of that work.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and Councilmember Fletcher will be added as a member of the Audit Committee consistent with the intent of Section 17.90 of the City's Code of Ordinances. And I will direct the clerk to update the membership roster for the Audit Committee to reflect this action. The next item is the reports from our two standing committees. We'll begin with the Business Inspections and Zoning Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Goodman.
Morning, Madam President. The Business Inspections and Zoning Committee has two items for approval this morning. Item number one are eight liquor license renewals, and item number two are a handful of gambling license renewals. I will move both of those items for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Kano.
Now, I'm in roll call.
Aye.
At this meeting. Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. The next item is the report from the Policy and Government Oversight Committee, given by the Vice President.
Thank you, Madam President. The Policy and Government Oversight Committee brings forward nine items for approval this morning. Item number one is a contract amendment with Alpha Review, GenX for medical bill, medical review services. Item number two is a gift acceptance from the Robert Wood Johnson Foundation for staff travel and lodging experience expenses. Item number three is approving the layout for the Johnson Street Northeast Street Reconstruction Project between Lowry Avenue Northeast and 18th Avenue Northeast. Items number four and five are highway turnback deeds from the State of Minnesota for land adjacent to Highway 94 at Lindale Avenue South, as well as Highway 394 at Washington Avenue North. Item number six is an agreement with the Minnesota Department of Transportation for landscaping improvements in the North Loop neighborhood. Item number seven is a contract for engineering and design services for the Bryant Avenue South Street Reconstruction Project. Item number eight is a bid of, is the bid of the Minger Construction Companies to provide all materials, labor, equipment, and incidentals necessary for catch basin and manhole repairs and authorizing the contract for the project. And item number nine is amending the federal legislative agenda to add support for the Natural Disaster and Emergency Ballot Act and authoring submittal of a letter to members of the Minnesota Federal Delegation expressing support. And, Madam President, I move all items for approval.
The Council Vice President has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Fletcher.
Aye.
Council Vice President Jenkins.
Aye.
Councilmember Schrader.
Aye.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Aye.
Councilmember Gordon.
Aye.
Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have reports from special committees, and we do have a report from the Executive Committee today, so I'll recognize Council Vice President Jenkins for that report.
Thank you, Madam President. The Executive Committee brings forward one item today, which is a wage freeze for all city employees and the appointed non-represented and politically, politically appointed groups. Move this item for referral to the Policy and Government Oversight Committee.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Is there any discussion or questions on that referral? Seeing none, I'll just briefly comment. I think the mayor mentioned this during his presentation, but as the Council Vice President said, this only includes those appointed positions because all of the other changes would go through discussions and agreements with our bargaining units, which are underway. We're really thankful to our staff who are leading up those discussions in HR, as well as the leadership from the bargaining units for their openness to work together so that we can plan for an uncertain future and do our very best to retain and support all of our staff through this time of economic hardship. So, we just really, really appreciate those partnerships and that openness as we all work together to support our staff. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll on the referral of this item to the Pogo Committee.
Councilmember Kano.
Aye.
Wright.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Councilmember Ellison.
Aye.
Council President Bender.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That carries, and that will be referred to the Pogo Committee at its next regular meeting on Wednesday, April 22nd. This brings us to our order of announcements. I do have one announcements, announcement from myself that's listed under the clerk's note in the agenda, and that is the designation of Councilmember Fletcher to serve as a member of the City's Board of Estimate and Taxation, given his capacity as Chair of our Finance Subcommittee, which is essentially now functioning as the Ways and Means Committee. which is essentially now functioning as the Ways and Means Committee, Councilmember Fletcher would then take Councilmember Worsami's place as well on that that committee, which is a combination of two elected members, the mayor and two city council members along with the President of the Park Board. The next meeting of the Board of Estimate and Taxation is on Wednesday, April 22nd at 4:00 PM. So I just wanted to announce that prior to the meeting. It does not require approval as an appointment by the President. And I know that going forward, as we reconvene after the state of emergency and with a new colleague, we will have a more robust discussion about the impact of that on our council structure. But for now, in, again, in the capacity of Chair of that Subcommittee, I am making this appointment to the Board of Estimate and Taxation. Are there any other announcements from council members? Seeing none, we have concluded all of the items on our agenda. Say no further, further business before us. And without objection, I will declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you so much, everyone. Hang in there. And I hope you have a safe and healthy weekend. Thank you.